Oh, are we good, man? I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay. This is the work session for our board meeting of... We are live for our work session for the board meeting of April the 21st. This is April the 17th. And what we do is we will go over our agenda. And for the moment, because the pandemic, the coronavirus is monopolizing all of our time and all of our concerns, the governor had a press conference this morning, and I'm going to read real quickly the first couple of paragraphs of it. It says, "Now therefore, I Tate Reeves, Governor of the State of Mississippi, by the authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of the State of Mississippi, in consultation with the state health officer, do hereby order and direct as follows. One, the statewide shelter in place instituted in Executive Order 1466 is extended and shall remain in full force and effect until 8:00 a.m. on Monday, April the 27th, 2020, except as follows." Paragraph one D double I. Nonessential business and operations cease minimum operations is amended to allow retail sales by nonessential businesses and operations limited to drive-through, curbside, and/or delivery services, provided such nonessential businesses and operations implement precautions to ensure adherence to the standards of paragraph one B two of Executive Order 1466, including social distancing requirements, maintaining a minimum of six feet distance between individuals, restrictions of gatherings of persons, no gatherings in groups of more than ten, regular and proper handwashing and personal hygiene, and adherence to the most recent regulations or guidelines issued by MSDH and CDC. And the second paragraph that I have in front of me is he has amended the prohibitive activities to allow state beaches, state park lanes, state lakes, and reservoirs to reopen on a limited basis. So, and that is to continue social distancing. And what he said that I did hear in the little snippet that I listened to was that if you were going fishing, two of you could be in a fishing boat, but not a collection or a group. So you're still looking at that six foot...
Jesse Penny Rochelle, is that curbside?
They would do curbside.
Then no, it wouldn't be allowed inside the store?
No, not according to that. Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
Chris Latimer, have you located any other language in your research?
No, I'm still waiting for it to hit the Secretary of State's website to be official, but I think what you read is accurate.
Okay, all right. And let me circle back. Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Carver, city clerk are here with me at the table. Online, we have Alderman Little. Has Alderman Sistrunk checked in yet? Is she there? Okay, Alderman Sistrunk is with us. Mr. Latimer, our city attorney is here. And we have Mr. Alderman Walker is not going to be with us. Mr. Beatty, has he joined telephonically at all, man?
I'm here, mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, so that should pretty well do all of us. Let me see. So that's just to say that we have a basically a quorum of our board, and what we're going to take up is our agenda. And there's very little, to be quite honest, under any of our department business. So what we're looking at right now is a couple of sets of minutes. Mr. Latimer, you have looked at those minutes? Are we good to go on those?
Yes, ma'am. They've been amended, and they should be in final form.
Okay, so what we'll do is cycle through each one of these items from a perspective of going on consent. Usually, we have the ability or the willingness to put minutes on consent. So unless I hear otherwise, we have those two items available for consent. Do I hear any dissent on that? So it will be consideration of the minutes of the April 3rd, 2020 work session, and consideration of the minutes of the April 7th, 2020 regular meeting. So hearing none, consent looks good for everyone. Mayor's comments, I know that Mr. Kemp, the senior, Kemp Senior, wants me to make acknowledgement of lineman week for the electric linemen who are working the lines. And so I will do that. Lineman Appreciation Week next week, which I will, that'll go under comments. Terry, are you on the line?
I am, yes, mayor.
That's correct, right. Next week?
It is. The official day is Saturday, and it'll run through next week as kind of an appreciation for our linemen.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I'll make that, I'll make that announcement then. Anybody, thank you. Anything anybody wants to have listed under comments at this point in time? Obviously, we'll all make comments when it comes to the board table, but okay, hearing none. We have no public appearances, we have no public hearings. The item under mayor's business, item A, is appointing Kristin Campanella as the emergency management contact and coordinator for the city of Starkville. If you recall, Mr. Britt used to be our emergency coordinator, and at the time that he was replaced, Ms. Campanella, we have not done anything to acknowledge her appointment. And so this is just a housekeeping measure. Chris, any difference in that representation as it relates to...
No, ma'am. We're just refreshing those minutes because the Jim Britt minutes date back to 2003, so it's been a while.
Yes, okay. And the last time we made an appointment was 2013, if y'all recall that. So this will, this will just allow her acknowledgement of her being in Jim, what was previously Jim Britt's role. So unless there's some issue with that, that's, I would think, a consent item. All right. The consideration of adopting an infectious disease internal policy manual, I realize that will not be a consent item because it's a rather large policy, which y'all probably haven't had a chance to read. But it is in response to what we've never experienced before, which is an infectious disease, and each one of the departments respond differently. So I asked them to look at what their response was based on a level, three levels of threat, which were minimum, medium, and severe or high. And so they have done that with what we're experiencing now. So just an opportunity for y'all to look at that policy and consider it, because I am guessing that this may not be the first time, I mean, this may not be the last time. We have to look at something along these lines, and so that puts us in a position to have something already in place. So if you will, when that comes around, essentially, it is what we have been doing. It was, you know, what we'll do from a minimum staffing, what we'll do from sending someone home if they're exhibiting signs of, or symptoms of the, whatever that infectious disease might be. But it's clearly spurred on by this COVID-19 thing, which, again, we've never experienced before. So that's, that's what that's about. And it's about 20 or so pages long, and each one of them were drafted through, using the department and their appropriate protocols. So, and then the next one is what will occupy the bulk of our time as it relates to this, because I want to make sure. I called all, everyone yesterday and just chatted briefly to say what I was recommending and what I wanted us to be thinking about as it relates to how we respond to the impact of this COVID-19, social distancing, closing of our restaurants, et cetera, on us. And so in using the Mississippi Department of, it's not revenue, what is it? At least it's the...
Revenue.
Yeah, it is a Department of Revenue. For some reason, that didn't sound right when I said it. Using the Mississippi Department of Revenue, the losses will be between anywhere between 25 and 40%. And so not wanting to hit the 40% mark, I'm being less than absolutely conservative. I used 35% of our sales tax. And in doing so, that gave me a revenue reduction of about $1,300,000 for us. So that is an area for the remaining six months of this year, that is a loss we're going to have to try to make up. So there are a number of steps that I think are appropriate for us to use. And in consultation with the department heads, we went through our normal six-month review with the department heads on their budgets. And I asked them to, as did the budget chair, and in that, in that process, to look at how we might cut and where they might cut. And they have gone through and found some cuts that add up to $737,500 roughly. These are all kind of rounding numbers. I didn't go to pennies, obviously. And, and a lot of that came quite accurately from parks, because not opening the swimming pool, for example, is about $50,000. And not, you know, reducing park staff, not having the part-time staff that we normally would have, is, is a large chunk of that. And all of that information should be, Lisa, this is included in everybody's packet, right?
President, it's part of the plan.
As part of the budget amendment. And, and so those are some of those things. We've got training that we've knocked out. We've cut down on some, some of the gas and oil that was running, running behind in terms of the usage, you know? At the six-month mark, you expect to have 50% of your usage in there. And so if it was running behind for whatever reason in the cost, we took some of that money back. So we did it, you know, $500 was important. We took $500 back. We took $250 back. We took $5,000 back. So every little bit of this added up to get us to the point of the $757,000, $737,500. And, and even though we may open the city back up, the governor may open the city back up, that doesn't, having experienced this revenue loss that we've got to make up. And so there are several things that I am recommending that are, that pain me greatly to do so. But one of them is obviously for us to take those department cost reductions. We will look at them this time, and then we'll look at them again in a couple of weeks. This will be an ongoing process to see where we might be able to make further cuts. But for this budget amendment and for this next board meeting, I am recommending the use of this, the $737,500 that was located from the, from the departments, understanding that that includes something like keeping our pool closed, because that's, that is a major expense. So that will take us all the way into the summer for how we handle this. The other piece of that is using $450,000 out of our ending fund balance, which is about a million and a half right now, which will leave us a little over a million. And while that sounds like a lot, it won't take anything that if this continues beyond that, for this to suck that dry. So I am, I am loathe to do it, but I think this is one of the places where we can pull at least some funding. And again, we will revisit that. If we open back up soon and things come back to normal, perhaps we can, you know, we can back off of that. But all the projections that I am hearing are that we are in this for eight to 12 months. So this is, this is an immediate with an opportunity for us to revisit. Department furloughs. I had recommended that we do it for two pay periods, which would be a time certain, and then obviously revisit it again. I have had some conversations with the vice mayor, who was more inclined to not say two pay periods, but say, just leave it open to see what it is that we're going to experience over this next period of time. And that may be a more prudent approach, is to say we, two pay periods is much too optimistic. Just leave it open, and we will revisit it, and we will be revisiting this every time we meet. So every two weeks, at the very, at the very least, we will be revisiting this issue. That's worth $100,000. And then as a point of leadership, not as a point of having extreme amount of money come with it, I am recommending that the department heads, the mayor, and the board of Alderman likewise take a 20% pay cut to reflect that we understand the times, and we are willing to take the hit along with our employees. And the thing about furloughs, and the reason Nav is actually in the room here, is because if there's a question about a furlough versus a layoff, I'm going to give it, I'm going to give it my best, and then let Nav tell me where I went wrong. But a furlough allows us to keep people, or they'll be the ones who get hired back, they keep their health insurance. And a layoff would not give them any benefits whatsoever. Is that correct now?
Unemployment, correct?
There will be unemployment.
Yes.
But a furlough is not...
Furlough is...
Yes, furlough still gets, yes, furlough still. The difference is, and here's why, for this particular disaster, it is a health-related disaster. And for us to lay off instead of furlough, you're putting people out there with no health insurance.
Pre-existing condition.
Yeah, if you, if you furlough, well, you won't know. I mean, we won't have, they won't be getting health insurance from us if we furlough, if we lay off, lay them off as opposed to furlough. And I just cannot imagine us putting people out of work and then not having health insurance during a health crisis. Go ahead, ask the ma'am.
Yeah. That's a, that's a great example and a great point. I guess at what point, you know, so basically, somebody can be, from what I understand, they can be laid off, and they can do get unemployment, which can get upwards of $800 a week, which might be actually an increase in pay for some of our employees, but with not having healthcare coverage if they were to contract the disease, and they do not, I mean, how does a pre-existing condition fit into the COVID? They say they got a diagnosis, and they're, they're laid off. I'm sorry, they're furloughed.
So if they're furloughed, they would continue to have health insurance. So our insurance is still taken into consideration if they go for any kind of illness. So when you're on furlough, the employees still have health insurance, so whatever medical attention that they need, it'll still be covered under the C's.
And that's not true of layoff, right?
That is not true of layoff. If they all lay off, they are not eligible for that. But COVID will kick into play if they choose to sign up for it.
But it would still cost them.
But COVID costs them.
COVID is pretty pricey, though, right?
Yes.
You're looking $1,200.
Yes.
Cobra is very pricey. All right, so anything else as it relates to that? Okay, so we've got layoffs. No, I'm going to come around. I'm going to come around. So we've got layoffs, we've got furloughs, and that was the, that's the $100,000. And then for us, it would just, I'm recommending 20%. Okay, and I will start with Ward seven, Alderman Vaughn.
Okay, with the insurance, will they have to pay their insurance? Will they catch it up when they come back to work, or how will that work out?
It will still be paid for by the city. If they're on furlough, insurance is still...
Be paid for by the city.
Always will have to pay.
And let me also say, while we're talking about this, that the city is still on the hook for a certain portion of unemployment, $235, I believe, for unemployment.
For a full time.
Right, but we're still going to be on the hook for some form of unemployment. So it's not a, it's not a total pass for the city, but that, that is not the total amount. I mean, because they could get 800 or so dollars with an additional 600 goes with that.
So you must suggest, how many do you really need to take to furlough?
35 is what we've got now. That's about 10% or so, a little less than 10% of our, more than 10%.
That'll leave us how many?
315, is that right? Employees?
Out of the general, it was 35, but total.
Right, but that's enterprise funds.
Enterprise fund, total, we said. So we have a total of 306 employees.
Okay.
So we, actually, we need 47 to take a furlough.
Yes. And what we did is, you know, this was certainly not anything I did arbitrarily, because we had to rely on the department heads to make those decisions, as to who they could, who they could continue to function and provide city services and do without. So this, this was, not that I'm throwing the department heads under the bus on this, but they're the only ones who knew from an operational standpoint what would work best for them to still be able to continue to serve our community. So that's, that's where those, those folks came from. And Nav has a list of those, which he will provide at some point.
And we're going to meet with them and let them know, explain everything to them?
Absolutely, yes. And this is, obviously, this will not take effect until Tuesday night, until the board decides what it wants to do.
Right.
In terms of voting on it. So, but yes, Nav and I both, yes. Nav and I both, I told him I want to, I want to be a part of those meetings, and we will sit down with each one of them and have those conversations.
Make sure we educate them well on this.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, let's see, who else have we got? Ham, Alderman Beatty, do you have any comments you want to make?
Mayor, I do. I'm, I'm good with the, what the vice mayor had suggested in letting not skipping the two pay periods and just going forward, trying to see what our budget would look like. Apparently, though, even if we start, if things start to open back up, they're going to open back up slowly. So I don't think our revenue from a sales tax standpoint, you probably, y'all have looked at this a lot closer than I have, it don't catch back up, which means at, by the, into the, the rest of this budget year, we're going to be looking at our rainy day fund or our surplus, whatever you want to call it, to supplement or make up that, that loss. And I guess the only thing I wanted to say was, follow this, is we're several months out from starting to, our budget process and stuff, and we, as we do that, we need to be realistic about having that, that surplus, not only to start our budget year every year that we have, have oil taxes start to come in, but just in the fact that that's what rainy day funds, contingency funds are for, is for situations, you know, times like this where we don't see something coming, all of a sudden, we need money to be able to keep people working or for furlough with their paychecks and, and, and health insurance and things like that. So as we start to think about it, we get closer to our budget year, we're planning our budget, we need to think about that as we plan for the amount of revenue, where our revenue is going to come from, stuff like that, and be as realistic as possible. And that's, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Beatty. And, and let me be really clear. I'm going to continue to have regular meetings with our department heads about their budgets, because we are rolling into the budget year, and this is going to be a prime driver for how we handle next year's budget. So I'm going to, we'll be doing it sooner than later. Normally, we sort of do that in the, in the May-June timeframe, but we're going to be monitoring it much more closely and be doing it sooner than that, as we go along through this. So Alderman Little?
Yes, mayor, thank you. I'd just like to clarify on Alderman Vaughn's question earlier as to furloughed employees and health insurance, with, just so the public's aware, that we do pay for the employees' healthcare 100%, and if they have any family members or children on there, they would be responsible for paying that outside to continue that coverage, correct?
Correct.
Yes, that's the question, that's what I really tried to get to you. You got that.
And I just wanted to clarify also as well, on those furloughed employees, that's not going to impact the PD or the fire department, correct?
Actually, there is a, there is some impact, in the sense that we're going to choose from there. We've got some admin people who are, who are being looked at.
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure if that was going to impact those departments or not, okay?
Well, in the sense of boots on the ground, no. But, but where we have the ability to reduce some, some admin structure, that's, that's being, that's being looked at.
Okay, thank you, mayor.
Yes, absolutely. Alderman Sistrunk?
Good morning. I, I would like to say that we are not in this boat alone. Every, every municipality in the state of Mississippi is going through this right now. Oxford just this week voted to implement a little over $3 million in budget cuts for them based on their expected lost revenue, and they are furloughing 135 people. About 30% of their workforce is being, being furloughed. Tupelo has just made adjustments to cut $2.5 million from their budget, and they very clearly say that this is their first round of cuts, and that they will continue to look at that as, as they get further into this. I was, I was pleased to see that the governor did in his comments allow small businesses to open up in the same way that restaurants are with curbside and retail delivery services. That will help us a little bit. It won't help us that much, but it will help us a little bit. It will help them greatly. What he also said in that, in his statements this morning is there's no money in the CARES Act, the $1.25 billion that's diverted to the state, there's no money in there that can be used for revenue short files at the local government level. So there's no hope, no help there. He said they're exploring other options as to where they might be able to help local governments, but he did not, he did not put forth any sort of proposal as how the state would help local governments. The federal government continues to explore whether or not they will help local governments with this revenue shortfall, but Congress is in recess until May. And once they're back in recess, from recess, it will take them a little while to, to sort through what they're going to do for us. So I think that evaluating this every, every two weeks is, is going to be very important for us, because things do continue to change. I am, as you said, loathe to dip into the cash reserves that we have built up through the years, not, mostly because it delays the inevitable. If, if we spend those up this year, when we begin our budget for next year, we're, we're already in a, in a hole, because these kind of revenue shortfalls are going to, are going to roll into the next year. Most places that are talking about this in terms of more than this budget cycle, talk about having the same level or even larger cuts next year. So I don't think we should sell ourselves short by thinking that once the state's reopened, everything's back to normal, we'll, we'll be back to business as usual at the city. It will take us a while to recover from this. We will recover from it, but it will take us a while. And we're, we're doing what we can to make those cuts as, as painless as possible, but they're, these are hard times, hard times. And I appreciate the board being willing to look at what needs to be done to keep the city financially viable.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Sistrunk. Alderman Carver, anything further from your, from your perspective?
I've just got a couple of questions, and these were the items that the department head were asked to recognize if they could contribute to the $737. One was on here, just, just for clarification, it says on the parks director, net vacant, it's like an 88, I'm finding it again, it's like an 88, the parks director vacant net is $8800?
Yes.
How does that?
Well, because Mr. DeQuillo is doing it for much less than it would cost us to have a director on board.
We're just doing this through Quill, and we're not, we're still in the process of hiring.
Oh, yes, yes. But that's for the time being, for this timeframe, that's what that would be.
Different, between the Quillas, okay.
Yes. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
One more.
Okay, sure. Alderman Vaughn?
I'm like Alderman Beatty and Alderman Perkins, still, there's two pay periods. Why don't we just leave that open?
Well, that's what, yes, I actually scratched through on my sheet. I scratched through it, yes, we can leave that, we can leave that open. And that will be, that will be absolutely something we can...
So we want to keep meeting back on it?
Well, we're going, well, we're going to end up...
We'll meet, but still, we just leave it open. We know we got that open.
Yes, yes. We will just, we will just leave it as, as department furloughs for the time being.
Another question was the fire department vacant position. Is that something nonessential with that?
Yes, that's what we're, we operated for a very long time with only four stations, and we're at a point now where we're back to being able to, no, we, no, we can function. So that's what that's about. Okay.
Mayor.
Ham, Alderman Beatty, yes?
Yes, yes. I understand that the Mississippi Municipal League, our annual convention, a conference is going to be scheduled for September, if you can get to do it. But I think one thing that cities, and Alderman Sistrunk mentioned, Oxford, Tupelo, of course, us, we're going, we're going to extend these rainy day funds. I don't know how much or how far down, you know, how close to spinning them up we're going to get, but I think one of the things that the MML needs to do, it's members, member cities, is to stress, in one voice, to the legislature, when they are in session next, next time, next year, that, that we need the ability to set, or find a way to establish a rainy day, legally, establish a rainy day fund, budget for a, a fund that's a contingency fund for the stuff that comes up like this. We don't have that right now. Basically, state says if you're good money managers and you, you set your taxes a certain way, and you are able to save and cut and do this and that, and you're good manager, you can build a rainy day fund, but you legally can't do it like the state of Mississippi can. They, they can, you know, they can, they can budget at the state level for 2% or 3% of their revenue to go into a rainy day fund. We can't do that. We need the state, municipalities and state of Mississippi need to be able to do that.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just going to say, and now we're starting to see how important that, that contingency fund is, is for, for our city, and I think other cities are realizing that also.
Absolutely. Well, and while I'm, while I'm thinking about it, we only did, since we're talking about the pay, the pay periods, not using two pay periods, we also only did the travel ban and the equipment purchases for 60 days, so we could just, we could, you know, say that those are going to be going on until further notice. So that, your MML comment reminded me that that's in September. That's a prime budget determining time for us, for meetings and that sort of thing. So I certainly am not going.
It's Tuesday, September 1st.
Yeah, the first to the third. And so, you know, from a travel perspective, I think, I think we're in such a role that that probably is an expense we shouldn't necessarily bear. All right, so anything else comment-wise as it relates to how we're going to respond? So if we, what I'm hearing, I think, is that we take those department furloughs and just have them until further notice at this point in time? And if there's anything else anyone thinks of as we're going, you know, I wake up in the middle of the night thinking about this, as we go through the, through the weekend and want to bring something back to the table for offer on Tuesday, then we'll do so.
Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Sistrunk?
With, with extending the furloughs and making those open-ended, do we want to mimic that language with the, the, the leadership roles that are taking a salary reduction?
Yes, I would think that, yes, they would travel together.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay, so that, that's the end of mayor's business at this point in time, under board business. Chris, you had wanted to fall, fall under board business with an extension, be it the governor's order, and his goes until the 20... order, and his goes until the 27th, which is a Monday. So you want to weigh in on that, Mr. Latimer?
Yes, ma'am, and I think Alderman Vaughn asked that question when he walked in the room. I thought it was a good question, and you were exactly right that we're covered now from a curfew standpoint because our resolution said that it would just extend with what the governor did. But in the interest of clarity and to be consistent with what we did at our last board meeting, I do think a third COVID-19 resolution is indicated, and all we'll do in this resolution is just track this latest governor's order and just clarify that non-essential retail can do curbside and drive-through, just clarify that the curfew runs through April 27th, and just kind of get everything up to date with this order is all that will be, and I'll start typing that after our work session today and circulate that via email to everybody.
Okay, that sounds good, and the issue will then be what happens on the 27th. So are you going to put language in there again? Because we don't meet, unless we choose to meet, we don't meet on the 27th. We won't meet again until May the 5th.
If it's the pleasure and will of the board to track with what the governor's doing, we'll just put that same language in there, saying that if the governor extends, we'll extend with it.
Okay, all right, and then we can determine whether or not we want to meet. So, all right, let's let it go, and if somebody wants to strike that from the resolution for some reason, you can do that as a separate whereas or, you know, now therefore, so...
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, that's good, thank you. All right, first a public hearing on amending the Unified Development Code. Alderman Little, that's something that you wanted, and would you like me to take that one, or you want to talk about it?
Well, it's just something that, you know, just like we're being impacted here in the city as to our budget and the sales tax revenues generated, our small businesses are experiencing the same thing, and probably to a much higher degree. With that being said, they've known for almost 10 years that they were grandfathered in those with the existing signages, they were given that extra time to come into conformance with our sign ordinance, and I think with these times that they're experiencing now that it's not unreasonable to add an extra year to that, which would push it over into 2022, May of 2022. I just think that's the thing to do for them right now.
Okay, all right, and I appreciate, and it is just calling for a public hearing on it, so that is, you know, we can deal with it later on, but in this case, it is a public hearing. So anybody have any issues or concerns about doing it that way? Okay, hearing none, why don't we go ahead and put that on consent? Is that good? Okay. And then the second item under board business is also, is appointing Kelly Prather to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the term ending June 30, 2025. The date for the applications has closed, and this was the only letter of interest that was provided, so that would be a good opportunity for a consent agenda item. Okay? Next item up is under planning, it's consideration of a preliminary plat, request for preliminary plat approval for Jack's Corner subdivision, and that will be in your packet as well, Mr. Dr. Simon and Dr. Kim. I'll get it right here in a minute. That is, that was approved by the planning and zoning unanimously? Unanimously approved?
Actually, it was 3 to 1.
A 3 to 1, okay. Well, we wouldn't put that one...
No, no, I'm sorry, it was unanimously.
Okay.
Another case that had...
It was 3 to 1, okay. All right, in that case, but that just lets us know that the planning and zoning found that to be an acceptable plat approval. We will hold off on that until everyone has a chance to look at it, and we'll allow the applicant to come forward for us. Under engineering, is it Mr. Kemp Jr., are you on the line? No, okay. This is the Build Grant.
There I am on the line, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, you just unmuted yourself? Okay, I just want to make sure you were available if any questions came up. This is an authorization to execute the 182 Martin Luther King Jr. Build Grant for a preliminary engineering services contract and any other required MDOT or FHWA contractual paperwork. Anything particular about this one, Edward, that we need to know?
No, ma'am, Mayor, this is just the next step in the process. We've been through quite a bit of negotiations with MDOT and Federal Highway on this contract, and I believe, like, I believe we're very, very close on getting that finalized by those two entities. So once this is approved by all three entities, we will start the design in earnest and still try to meet that obligation deadline. Yes.
Okay, all right. Mr. Latimer, you have looked at this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Any issues with putting that one on consent? No? Okay, all right, on consent. Thank you, Mr. Kemp, and then we have the claim stock it. We know that's not going on consent, and then consideration of budget amendments, and that is what was part of my discussion, and that was what was included in your packet. So that I'm sure will require further discussion for the board meeting, so. And then we have acceptance of March financial statements, which are usually consent items, so any issues with acceptance of those statements? And then if you will look, there is nothing else, there is nothing else on the agenda. So we have executive session, potential litigation, and pending litigation, both of which Mr. Latimer will brief us on at that point in time, and that information should be in your package. Anything else from anyone else? Start with Mr. Carver, anything from you for the work session?
Okay.
Okay, Alderman Sistrunk, anything from you?
No, I just, once again, would like to thank our department heads for really stepping up and helping us with the budget. I know that we will more than likely be talking about this again, so don't let your budget copy get too far from you, and I do appreciate what they're doing. We are trying our very best to take care of our employees and live with...
Yes, okay, thank you. Alderman Little.
Hello, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Beatty?
No, ma'am, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am.
All right, nothing else, ladies and gentlemen, then we will adjourn this meeting. Mr. Latimer, nothing from you, right?
No, ma'am.